Stop. I don't know if anybody heard that. Our farmers are literally competing with the entire world. Hastings was the potato capital of the world at one time. They are adapting every year to weather, to technology, and to government bureaucracies. I work with our farmers by participating in their annual tours to understand how local, state, and federal government impacts their livelihood and their ability to grow food for our livelihoods. I support innovative ways to integrate and educate people with our agritourism organizations and agriculture organizations. The River to Sea Loop is one of the examples where there's a trail being created all the way through the county from west to east in order to encourage people to learn about our farming organizations, make it a tourist destination for a weekend or a week for people. It's important that we understand how we in other business sectors affect or are affected by our farmers and our livestock breeders in our community because we affect each other in a tremendous way. By taking tours of these organizations and understanding what's important to them, what's changed in the previous year, I stay up to date with how development affects them, how transportation affects them, how simple things like water and sewer services and regulations affect them. So I've continued to remain in contact such as with Jeb Smith, our commissioner from District Two, and how our changes to policy impact our agritourism and agriculture community because they are a vital part of St. John's County. It's a significant percentage of our community that doesn't look for the TV cameras. They just do what they do to provide for our bare essentials of life and sustainability for our county, our state, and our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is going to be focused around land use plan, and we'll start with you, Mr. Whitehurst first. Got a question regarding the county's comprehensive land use plan and map. What would compel you to vote for or against a land use change in the agriculture or silviculture areas of our county? Please give some examples.
Well, I will say this, having just answered the question about agriculture, I would like to see us continue to have a strong agricultural community. But I understand that we live in the state of Florida, and in the state of Florida, private property owners have rights. And so when they come to me for a comp plan amendment, it will go through these simple filters. Is it a net benefit to this community? Do we have the infrastructure to support it? Is it a net benefit to our environment? Will it have a negative impact on our wetlands? Can we conserve enough green space? Will it negatively affect our waterways? And if the answer is it is not a net benefit to this community, if it is not a net benefit to our environment, I simply won't support the comp plan amendment. If it does benefit the community, if it does benefit the environment, then it's something I would take a look at supporting.
Thank you. Mr. Johns?
The land use plan provides a fantastic comprehensive overview of the intent of a community. But the needs of a community change over time. So we have a mechanism for properly vetting the request of a comprehensive land use change that takes months, if not years, to go through not just local agencies but state and federal agencies as well. It's important that we understand the difference between land use and zoning and the compatibility of one piece of property versus another. It's important because we have to maintain a sustainable environment for our businesses, for our residents, and those businesses include our agriculture. I'm proud to say that in the past five years, we've gone from 30% conservation and preservation land in our county to now close to 40% as a result of these land use changes that have been asked for, and some have been approved because the changes have not only been for the purpose of development, to provide homes and provide businesses to the growing demand of our community, but to also conserve vast swaths of land. We've added thousands of acres of conservation and preservation in the last five years as a result of the changes to our land use and comprehensive plan. And it's only because of the careful vetting to make sure that it is in the best interest of everybody that's affected by those changes. Thank you.
MacInerney?
So Mark, first of all, when we're talking about silviculture and agricultural areas, we're beginning to limit what parts of the county were focused on. But I will say that with regard to the comprehensive plan and the decisions that have been made regarding that, recent county commissioner decisions really have awarded an excessive amount of development far in excess of what the future land use map would demonstrate as our expectation. And so we have to be careful that we are not bringing those same practices to new areas of the county. Yes, we want to be sensible. Yes, we want to measure benefits, but we want to have a better perspective of what that is. I think the King's Grant example along 206 is excellent where they were, it was just too much too soon and far exceeded the available county resources to serve that kind of community at that remote location. Growth is coming. Growth will happen, but it needs to be done in a sensible way. And yes, all property owners have their private property rights, but they have to be carefully measured against the rights that we as taxpayers have to not carry the burden for additional roads and utilities to serve remote locations. I think we, once again, we need to bring all stakeholders to the table. We need a vision plan. Our comprehensive plan should reflect what we as a community in 2020 want to see for ourselves right now. So I am all for private property rights. I am all for development, but sensible development that preserves conservation and growth while at the same time not burdening, overburdening all of our taxpayers with the requirement to provide infrastructure to those areas.
Thank you. That sort of leads us into our next grouping of questions. It's going to be around housing, infrastructure, and services. Mr. Johns, we'll start with you first. It's on housing. If you, if people cannot afford to live here, they cannot afford to work here. How do you propose changing the economic restructure of the housing and employment imbalance? Please describe any specific strategies you plan to implement to encourage the development of affordable housing options in our county.
I'm glad that you brought this up because a wide range of housing prices from affordable housing to high-end housing is critical for the health of any community. Before I became a commissioner, it had been close to 10 years before any multifamily developments had been approved by the commission. I've been told that we've now approved over 2,000 multifamily units, and that's not just apartments, that's townhomes and condominiums. This is not rent-controlled subsidized housing. These are market rate prices because we need to be able to have affordable housing for every aspect and demographic of our community. Because if people have to live outside of our community and commute into our community, that means more wear and tear on our roadways, more traffic, and the list goes on. By being able to work closer to where people live, it's a benefit to everybody. Our tourism industry in the city of St. Augustine and St. Augustine Beach is a fantastic example of the criticality of being able to afford to live close to where people work. Our Coalition Aging Organization provides the Sunshine Bus for those who don't have transportation. If they can't live in our community, it's much more challenging for them to be able to have transportation to get to work than if they're able to live within our community. Thank you.
Mr. MacInerney?
Well, affordable housing certainly so, so very important. I am pleased that the county recently enacted some ordinances attempting to set a price point for affordable housing, that price point being $238,000. There was some debate whether that was too high. It was set as a max limit, but with that ordinance came incentives to developers such that if they provided housing at that level, there would be incentives for increased density of other price point housing. Now, that's fine to say, but infrastructure is important. Transportation is important. Commissioner Johns was exactly right in St. Augustine. Those in the hospitality network, great people, they need to have housing that allows them to live well, live close, and to earn from those jobs. Once again, I bring it up again, visioning is important. Where should, where should affordable housing be? How can we work to achieve that? Let's don't wait on the developers to bring their ideas to us. Let's have a vision for what we need, where we need it, and how we can get it. The developers will do a fine job of following through on that, I'm sure. But it starts with us. It starts with us as commissioners leading the way.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehurst.
Mr. MacInerney touched on it, and Mr. Johns touched on it. I mean, I know sheriff's deputies who are married who cannot afford to live in the county in which they so bravely serve. A sheriff's deputy should be able to be married to a schoolteacher and should be able to afford a home in the county in which they work. Now, look, I'm sensitive to the fact that St. John's County is special and it's different, and we do not want St. John's County to become Duval County or Hillsborough County or Miami-Dade County. But we need to make sure that there's affordable housing for people who are starting their professional lives, for people who work in retail, as I do, for people who work in the hospitality industry, who are professionals and who maybe just can't afford the high price points so many in St. John's County are blessed to be able to afford. I've had great conversations with people who are passionate about this issue, and I think we can look to other counties around the state of Florida for some best practices and try and maybe incentivize some of those affordable housing projects. And I think there is a path forward here. I think there's the political will to do it. I think there's a will from the private sector to do it, and it is just about having that vision and making sure that we follow through on these best practices implemented.
Thank you. Before I move on to the next question, I need to make sure I make an announcement that I need to welcome all the Facebookers to do a Zoom session. And I also want to let you know that the session is being recorded, and we will share the full session on social media. Apparently, Facebook is flagging us as political, and so they're holding the broadcast. So I think we're, once again, this is new for us, so we're learning a few things. So just want to, want to, want to take the Facebookers and see if they go to Zoom session. But once again, want to remind everybody that it is being recorded, and we will replay that, you know, on social media. Now, I want to transition to the infrastructure. Next question, and Mr. MacInerney, we'll start with you. Infrastructure investment has not kept up with population growth in the county. Specific to the business needs of road improvements and sewer enhancements and extensions, do you have a plan for dedicating financial resources to address this issue?
Well, Mark, part of this is the old adage that when you're digging a hole deep, stop digging. I think that infrastructure deficit goes to the whole issue of excessive county commissioner decisions in the past, awarding far more than our future land use map would predict. It does beg the question of impact fees. I'm not saying that I'm a proponent for that, but certainly we need to study that. We need to study the funding mechanisms for finding our way out of the hole that's already been dug for us. We need to stop digging the hole deeper. I can tell you that as a recipient of the Neighborhood Bill of Rights, there are 15 land use changes that are lined up at the county commissioner door waiting for consideration for land use change. So development is not stopping. Development is not stopping, given the COVID crisis and what we are all facing. What we do need to stop is the excessive giveaway that this county commission has provided over the last many years, digging a very deep hole for us. And unfortunately, we are, as a county and as a group, first of all, need to find a way to get ourselves out of that hole and certainly not dig that hole any deeper.
Okay, Mr. Whitehurst?
No, when I moved to this county back in 1999, we were a county of 119,000 people, and now we are somewhere close to or around 270,000 people. And it is obvious to everyone, the infrastructure just has not kept up. Understanding that there are 60,000 homes that will be built that haven't yet begun construction, Mr. MacInerney is absolutely right. We have got to stop the bleeding. Understanding also that we will grow, that means that we have to aggressively pursue solutions. I think the strong avalorum growth that we've had over the last several years is a part of that. We know that we've had a $16 million surplus in the budget last year, and that's due to the strong avalorum growth. But also making sure that we have an atmosphere to create business to St. John's County is also going to be a part of that growth. We are way out of balance. A county that's run properly has 65% commercial avalorum revenue and 35% residential, and we are upside down and backwards on that, on that number. So we've got to do a better job of attracting business to St. John's County, and that will help fund some of the infrastructure deficits that we face.
Thank you, Mr. Johns?
Thank you. As a civil engineer, I understand infrastructure and the impact that it has on a community. What my opponents may not know or may not want people to know is that the majority of the hole that we've been in was due to previous administrations and commissions during the recession 12 years ago. They chose to defer maintenance on the things that would least impact our community while continuing to provide fully funding sheriff's office, our first responders, and our health and human services departments. Last year, we fully restored 100% the funding due to the Transportation Trust Fund as a result of the other benefits that we've provided to our county. By removing the impact fee to commercial businesses, we double that revenue, enabling us to have more funding available to provide 1,000 miles of paved road in the last five years. We've built three new fire stations in the last five years. We didn't build three new fire stations in the previous 15 years. We've added to our funds, our reserves, we've maintained our AA rate, bond rating without increasing taxes. We've been able to balance the benefits of attracting so many people to our community in a managed way that we are fully restoring those deficits that were carefully considered and painfully executed during the recession so that we have not had to borrow money during the hurricane recovery efforts as our communities, counties around us have had to do. It's important that we recognize the unsexy parts of infrastructure. It's not just the roadways, it's the utilities, it's the water pressure, it's the sewer capacity. We have fantastic people who are actively managing each and one, every one of those aspects of our community without increasing expenses so that we can continue to have a high quality of life and still make sure that we don't overdo it. We don't want to prove everything and anything, but we've, we are still digging out of a hole of close to $300 million in deferred maintenance, and we've whittled that down to close to 200 million, if I've been told the numbers right, in just five years.
Thank you, Mr. Johns. It's a great lead into the next question, and Mr. Whitehurst, we'll start with you. The Florida Office of Economic and Demographic Research has reported general Florida revenue losses for April, May, and June totaling over $2 billion. Do you anticipate a drop in revenue to St. John's County? And if so, what plan do you have to ensure we maintain our roads, parks, and libraries and other services in the next fiscal year?
Yeah, there's no question that coronavirus has taken a financial toll on everyone, and government has not been immune from that. I think this is where my background as a business owner and retail businesses that are often up and down throughout the year will serve the people of St. John's County well. Obviously, St. John's County is an amazing county because we've continued to have avalorum growth even through the coronavirus shutdown. I've spoken with realtors and builders who continue to sell homes, even to this, you know, economic stop and go that we've had over the last several months. So we will continue to have some avalorum dollars coming into the county, but in terms of our sales tax and in terms of the bed tax revenue, we will be down. And so you have to do some belt tightening. You have to take some measures and make some tough decisions. I would just say this, the safety of the citizens of St. John's County can never take a backseat. So you have to fund the sheriff's office, we have to fund the emergency services like the fire department, and we have to make sure that our children have every opportunity to continue to have the best lifestyle in the state of Florida, which I believe that they do. But I want to make sure that we fight to continue to allocate resources to make sure that continues to happen. But there's no question that we have to tighten the belt and make some tough decisions, and I think my experience will definitely benefit people.
Thank you, Mr. Johns?
Thank you. Yes, we will have a reduction in the sales tax revenue. That's a number one priority, a topic that our state and federal representatives have been talking about. It will substantially impact St. Augustine and St. Augustine Beach, who has a much higher percentage of revenue coming from sales tax. The county, however, has been so judicious in managing its expenses over the last several years and encouraging business growth, and not so much the residential growth, that we're still expected to have a net growth of over 10% in our revenue this year in spite of Corona compared to last year. And that's only because our individual department directors have been carefully watching their money year after year. I have to give them credit because even when we had a $16 million surplus last year, which I recommended giving back to our taxpayers, it's their money after all, they were able to keep their expenses low rather than raising their expenses and their overhead, they tightened their belts last year before there was a coronavirus. And as a result, we are well positioned not to have to worry about cutting back on maintaining our infrastructure, any salary decreases. We're not growing our overhead. As a result, we're managing our revenues judiciously so that we can continue to provide high-quality services for our parks, our libraries. We were anticipated to have over a $16 million surplus this upcoming year prior to the virus impacting all of us financially. We're still anticipating having a 10% increase over last year in spite of the virus, and that's due in part to everybody collaboratively working together. That means we are 100% funding our sheriff's budget, 100% funding our health and human services budget, 100% funding our first responders' budget as it's been provided to us. We're not spending money unnecessarily because technology costs money. We have to pay our first responders and our sheriff's deputies so that they can afford to live in our community, and we're doing so.
Thank you, Mr. MacInerney?
So Mark, first of all, yes, St. John's County largely in the same boat as is the state of Florida with regard to sales tax. Our revenues are projected to be down, and our OMB Director Jesse Dunn has done an excellent job of keeping the commissioners and the county informed on that. But on the other hand, yes, indeed, the avalorum values have increased such that while the departments have been asked to present a minimum budget, bare bones budget, they have all been awarded what they have asked for because the OMB Director Jesse Dunn has seen that we can submit a balanced budget to the county and to the county commissioners, offsetting a loss in sales tax with an increase in avalorum. But it is a shame to continue to talk about a $16 million surplus and counting on that when last year, in fact, faced with continuing. Faced with the fact that we are way behind in providing adequate park space, trying to keep that park space recreation, walking trails for our families, that we didn't have a plan to better fund those departments. I would say that the OMB Director Jesse Dunn has provided us with an excellent balanced budget. We need to keep an eye on it. This is going to be a difficult year. We need fiscal responsibility. Joe MacInerney will be part of that responsible, eyes on responsibility.
I'm going to transition. I've got a few more questions, but I'm going to transition a little bit to any questions that the team has received off of Facebook. They have been monitoring those, so I will ask the team if there are any questions that they have seen coming up that they'd like to present to you. And as far as the sequencing, it'll be, you're up, Mr. Johns, as far as answering this question, and then I'll transition to the other two. So Kathy, any questions that have come in that you'd like to ask?
We have one question that's come in, and it is, how do the candidates feel about funding LAMP once again?
Mr. Johns?
LAMP was originally dissolved because there was a lack of being able to have a quorum show up to the meetings to make it a viable meeting and to be able to continue the organization. It's a good example of the ebb and flow of organizations. I support LAMP, and I support it being resumed. We have to make sure that we have a clear goal in mind and that we have committed, dedicated volunteers, residents of our community participating in the organization because it's important that we do have people from our community, not just government employees, making these types of decisions in order to protect our environment, protect our lands. And by having people with relevant experience participating, and not just this, but the literally three-plus dozen advisory boards and committees populated by our residents, it will be a viable committee again that will be relevant to our community and a very important feedback to our commission and to our departments to incorporate that perspective in with the other perspectives as our community does continue to grow.
Thank you, Mr. Johns. Mr. MacInerney?
So Mark, if you go to the county's website and read about LAMP, what the county says is that the program was discontinued due to lack of funding, state funding. And in answer to Commissioner John, if we're looking for an active community committee to attend each and every meeting, let's reach out to the Sierra Club, to the Audubon Society, and to all the conservation groups that we have here in St. John's County. They are eager, eager, eager to resume LAMP, Land Acquisition and Management Program. Florida Forever has funded $100 million this year. Three of their 118 priority projects are here in St. John's County, and yet we have no responsible entity to step forward and to present an action plan and a rationale for receiving some of those funds. We have an outstanding Greenways, Blueways, Trails map that was developed by our county citizens in 2004, sitting on the shelf gathering dust. Let's bring that back. The GBT plan is already incorporated in our comprehensive plan, but plan reviews don't count on that. It's on the shelf gathering dust. Let's reach out to our conservation groups. They are eager to show us the way.
Mr. Whitehurst?
I think that this is, I'm so happy that this question was asked because I think no matter what room I've been in all around St. John's County, no matter what group I'm speaking with, the LAMP program comes up to me time and time again, and I've found that this community wants us to relight the lamp, so to speak. I'm going to lead that charge if I have to, but this is a fantastic way for the community to get involved in the acquisition and conservation of green space. And I've spoken about that throughout this campaign. That's something that is part of the culture of St. John's County. That's something that's part of the lifestyle that we all enjoy here in St. John's County as Florida's natural environment. So we understand that the population is growing. We understand that there will be homes and businesses that will open, but I think this community wants to have the opportunity to have a voice and to be able to weigh in on conserving green spaces. And I've found that there's a lot of people who would be acutely interested in participating in the LAMP program if it were to be reactivated.
Thank you. Before we conclude tonight's town hall, we want to invite each candidate to offer closing remarks. The order, the closing marks, we're going to reverse alphabetically and start with you, Mr. Whitehurst. Mr. Whitehurst, the floor is yours.
I just want to thank everybody for taking time out of your Thursday night to tune in to a discussion about local issues. If you're watching this right now, it's, I know because you care very, very much about the future of St. John's County. That's why I'm running for county commissioner. So if you believe that a path forward for St. John's County is to get government out of the way so that we can attract business, then I'm asking for your vote. If you believe that a county commissioner should fight to continue to keep St. John's County the best community to live, work, and raise a family, then I'm asking for your vote. If you want a county commissioner who will stand with law enforcement and emergency services, then I'm asking for your vote. You want a county commissioner who will stand county commissioner who will stand with our veterans with their actions and not just with their words, then I'm asking for your vote. If you believe like I do that our best days are still yet in front of us, then on August the 18th, I'm asking for your vote. Thank you for your
Thank you, Mr. Whitehurst. Mr. McInerney?
Well, thank you. As we conclude tonight, I want to thank, first of all, the St. John's County Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event and providing the opportunity for all of us to discuss our visions for what our county's future should look like. I wish both of my opponents the best of luck next week. I hope everyone watching has had a chance to learn about how putting the safety and prosperity of St. John's County is putting families first, focusing on real smart growth to stop overdevelopment, and bringing sustainable jobs to St. John's County and how that can help make our community stronger than it has ever been. We've had an amazing partner here in the Chamber of Commerce, one of many stakeholders who will be at the table in vision planning for the future of St. John's County, from families to farmers and from conservationists to small business owners. You can learn more about my vision for a better future at electjomack.com. That's my website. That is electjomack, M-A-C-K, dot com. I am Joe McInerney, a retired architect with over 40 years' experience, who is ready to start on day one as your full-time county commissioner. I thank you all so much. Good night. God bless St. John's County, and God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Johns.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Thank the St. John's County Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development Council, the sponsors, and for everybody participating to be educated on the differences between the candidates for St. John's County District One. It's important to recognize that experience matters, relevant experience matters, understanding the eccentricities of managing a pandemic, a hurricane, economic growth of commercial versus residential businesses. I've provided to you what I've already done in the last five years and what I'm asking to do for one more term. Being a commissioner is not my career. It's my means of giving back to the community in which I grew up. It's my way to give back and learn from other people what's important to them, what attracted them here, what keeps them here. By working together, we have become number one in so many different ways. That does not happen by, by accident. It happens by collaboration. And we want to continue to be number one in so many different ways, navigating through different challenges and enjoying the benefits of a community that is so sought after by businesses and residents alike. It's my pleasure to be able to serve the community. I want to hear from people now and beyond this campaign as to how I can continue to contribute to the community in which I grew up and to help people connect in meaningful ways so that they can also raise their families and have productive businesses. Thank you for your time tonight, and I wish you a good evening.
Thank you. On behalf of the chamber, I'd like to thank the candidates, Mr. Jimmy Johns, Mr. Joe McInerney, and Mr. Christian Whitehurst, for joining us this evening and participating in the 2020 Politics in St. John's virtual forum. Thank you to all the candidates who participated in this year's Politics in St. John's and submitted videos for viewing by St. John's County voters. We extend our sincere appreciation and gratitude to our sponsors, Advanced Disposal, the presenting sponsor, and patriotic sponsors, Advanced Business Solutions, Ameris Bank, Canstegy, Brooks, Smith &amp; Prophet, Florida Power and Light, and Northrop Grumman. To our Chamber members and partners, we appreciate your support of this event and of the chamber. And to you, our Facebook audience, thank you for watching, commenting, and sharing your questions. We invite you to the chamber's website at www.sjchamber.com. Click on Politics St. John's to learn more about the 2020 candidates and view their videos. You can cast your vote in the chamber's unofficial straw poll. A link to the poll is located on Politics in St. John's page on the chamber's Facebook page. The straw poll closes at 5:00 PM Friday, August 14. Unofficial results will be released on the chamber's website and here on Facebook over the weekend. Remember, early voting closes this Saturday, August 15. If you don't get a chance to vote early, you can vote at your designated voting precinct in the preliminary primary election on Tuesday, August 18. Visit the St. John's County Supervisor of Elections website at www.votesjc.com for early voting locations and election day precincts. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, St. John's County. Thank you all.